We're ready, Mr. Mayor.
I don't know, but it's that thing or them, but there's terrible signal.
Hi, John. You hear the lighting? Oh. I'd like to talk about the holiday lighting quote that I was on with the agenda. And I think of a suggestion. That is why we many times. That for them were a three cities day and that's the main down tonight. Just to ask if the pop or maybe showcase four screens within the budget and like all the bridge up to the top. Instead of lighting a mini screen, we'll drive through it and I can just put just a bunch of this. So I'd like to be moving. Maybe you could put it about. And be a given to the tree board as well.
Everybody. For anything disappointed to have to be here. Because of your activities on both. House situation that I'm facing. I've never heard a justification from the board on the reason you want from rationalize while you're trying to take. The junior's. It was kind of interesting. After reading the judge's opinions. Reputation of the city has really been tarnished by this fall operation. Spoke from the judge, there's nothing equitable or fair about the role plaintiff was trying to achieve. Or demand or originally are trying to achieve. That doesn't speak very highly of the council. Second, it'd be closely in a shot to publicize, since the government body, you take away private citizens, private property rights. By virtue of the fact that the citizen was forced into paying on the ramp to have access to the. I know you just had your meeting. To decide whether you're going to feel the drugs. I'd like to offer a couple of suggestions.
Well, this guy is going after him.
Second, pay their fees and plus will their returnings.
He says our town's reputation is tarnished over this.
Or pay back the rent that they had to pay for the period of time.
Talking about them paying back the rent. And apologize to him.
David Shar 1027, David Street, just looking for a couple of updates. On the tennis court resurfacing. And where that stands, I've tried to look at the minutes and all that, but a little bit of details or at least the details. Of when or what's going to happen there. And then a couple of months ago, I was told by the waste pro guys that it's no longer take anything that resembles building area. So I'm looking for whether that's true, not true. Where we're supposed to take it, if that is true. Or whether it could be incorporated into the conference because we all throw away two by fours lumber and all that stuff and. They were picking them out and leaving them there, so. That's a problem for me.
Hey, let me see if you can get any information on this.
Can I ask one more thing before you stop sitting down? Yeah, on back to waste pro, is there a chance we can get if it's just once a year? A hazardous waste pickup? Kind of like we do with electronics, I know that's kind of outsourced, but we all have paints and thinners and stuff that. I know we don't want to just dump in the yard, so if we could organize that, that would be very helpful.
Thank you.
We're in the process of paying boats for the recircusing of those tennis courts and once we receive those, we will place that into the budget per the Parks and Rec company.
No, not aware of any changes and I did have this conversation with Platt after the, was it two months ago? Well, it was about two months ago when I talked to David after the the meeting, he told me about what was going on, so. I'll just reaffirm it with him, but they've not indicated that there's anything changing and we can work on the hazardous material pickup. Not only with waste probe, but also maybe with Orange County.
I think. I understand that to have these working. They will, they open up the. They accept that if you have an amnesty day or work or something. If you're bringing it there, even in the county, so we'll check out. They did some happy ways.
Yeah, that's right.
They do maybe easier on some. Sign me up appreciation of Black presentation for this.
Unfortunately, he is. After, I don't know how many actually years in the town, I know he's been. My very beginning, just 14 years until from the gray hairs in my head and chin too. But yeah, my closest 14 years also been working with Tanya, town staff. John was back. We were sad to get that email from him, but. His wife wanted to go to university of Alabama Birmingham. To teach over there, so decided that he got sweeps and moved to Alabama, so he believing his number, but I didn't just recognize him. From the town council and say. All this stuff they've done is all available. Test or showing, so I just wanted to show them.
He, I. This variance from them in helping us determine how to work with. Our ever-changing workflows to try to move water, he and John, it's getting retired asleep. We know that's not easy. That can be done. We can figure out a way to that happened. Now I will say, I give you a name that they.
And Mike, I would love to thank you very much for everything that you've done since I arrived here. You have been instrumental in helping me get up to speed and continue to service the residents of the town of Windermere. And even though you're leaving, you're still helping us finalize our grant documentation that you have been working on and I can't thank you enough for your professionalism. And I wish you all the best.
Thank you, Tony. There's been my honor to serve a town and I could, you could have done with that, your support. Through all these years and. I have a huge debt gratitude to Robert, Tanya, John. And staff for, for really your friendship and also. Helping, helping me navigate through processes that we've had to go through in town. And you know, from, from the time I started working with the town. There's been tremendous growth, tremendous change, so it's. It's like I said, it's been my honor to be a part of that, that change and. And I see the town having just a tremendous future with. With Robert and Tanya's leadership, so I just wish you guys the best and. And I'll be back, I'll be back to see you, I'm sure I'll see those changes. Second reading, so there'll be a hearing for each one, so bear with me as we open it close. Do public hearing at those public hearings, anyone here can comment. Hearing, close it, open it up.
We do have Wade Trim here, in case there's any questions relative to any of the ordinances or the complaint. We do have Wade Trim here, in case there's any questions relative to the ordinances of the complaint.
First up is ordinance number 2025, that zero. The menu is very free. Those are Windermere Town Council. Anyone who has comments. Those are public hearing at 6:35 PM.
Old Dave.
Ordinance number 20. That is important to the town. Developed it, providing findings, amendments. And one, two, one, zero. And code, the birth of the enterprise. Spots and re-butt. Judge in 77. Now can you vote?
Yes.
I can't see any questions, I'm under this meeting. End voting. Next up. Order number 25-06. This is about another 20. 245. Those are media. Young. Witness 25-6. Or statues based. Valuations based. The confidence of. This time. Close our public hearing. Any questions, comments, what? Seeing none. Entertaining a motion to approve. Motion to approve, motion to approve, councilperson Adam. Second, second councilperson wins. Begin voting with councilperson needs.
Aye.
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 Next up is item number three, ordinance number 2025 dash zero eight, permitting and inspecting. This is ordinance of the town of Windermere, Florida pertaining to fire safety, finding findings, creating new article four. Creating a new article four of chapter six of the code of ordinances, acting as simplified permitting and inspection process for fire alarm systems, fire sprinklers. Requiring certain documents for attention by contractors, providing for application fee refunds in certain circumstances, providing for codification, separability. At this time, may comment on ordinance number 2025 dash zero eight. None, close our public hearing at 6:39 PM, reopen our Windermere Town Council, Town Council against 6:39 PM. Council, any questions, comments, or concerns? I missed it again. You want me to read it again?
No.
Close our Windermere Town Council meeting again at 6:39 PM, reopen the public hearing at 6:39 PM. Yes. Anyone may comment. Seeing none. Close our Windermere Town Council against 6:39 PM, our public hearing is 6:39. And reopen our public, reopen our town council meeting at 6:39 PM. Council, any questions or concerns? Ordinance number 2025 dash zero eight. Looking for a motion to approve. Motion to approve, person now. Second, councilperson James. Begin voting with councilperson's group.
Aye.
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 I just don't follow. Next up, ordinance number 2025 dash zero nine, certified recovery residences. At 6:40. We will close our Windermere Town Council meeting and we will reopen or we will open a public hearing at 6:00. For any public comment on ordinance number 2025 dash. All right. Ordinance number 2025 dash zero nine, ordinance of the town of Windermere, Florida pertaining to reasonable accommodations, certified recovery residences. Providing findings, creating new article. Sixteen of the land development code, providing definitions, providing standards for the establishment of recovery residences and application procedure. Clearing the suspension or failures with chain circuitation or proper basis for relocation of reasonable accommodation. Declaring that recovery residences are subject to the same regulations and have the same rights as residential uses, providing for codification, separability. Read it, had a public hearing. What, close the, close our hearing, close our hearing. Because I jumped ahead. See how I mean, do you think I make it? Council, looking for a motion to. Yeah, okay. So we're still a public here.
Yeah.
All right, we have any public comment? Seeing that, close our public hearing at 6:11, yeah, reopen our Windermere Town Council meeting at 6:40. Council, what are your motion to approve? Motion to approve by councilperson needs. Again, the councilperson. Begin voting with councilperson needs.
Aye.
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 Fortunately, tonight we have a lot of chances to see if we can do this one correctly. This is ordinance number 2025 dash 10, closer Windermere Town Council meeting at 6:42 PM. It will open a public hearing at 6:42 PM, reading the ordinance of the town of Windermere pertaining to structural inspections and repairs. Elements and cooperative buildings, providing findings, creating new, creating new article three of chapter six of the code of ordinances. Requiring milestone inspections of common items and cooperative buildings, requiring inspection reports. Specifying timeframes for repairs to be scheduled and commenced, requiring the building official to submit repair. And inspection information to the Department of Business and Professional Regulation, providing for codification, separability. Anyone like to make public comment on this item? Seeing none, close our town wind and public hearing at 6:43 PM. And reopen our Windermere Town Council meeting at 6:45 PM. Second by councilperson Williams. And look, councilperson's shirt.
Aye.
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 Aye. So now we get to do new business. Council, we have three sets of meeting minutes in front of us this evening for your review. Council, you can approve all of these for items as one, or you can pull them as required. Council, one permission. Fair motion to approve all three sets of meetings. Councilperson Adam, motion to approve all three, second?
Second.
Second, councilperson Williams. End voting with councilperson needs.
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, next up is a variance request, this is Z25 dash zero three, this is a variance request, 904 Main Street. To allow for demolition and reconstruction of portions of existing non-conforming pool and pool dock less than 50 feet from the level. On this item, thank you very much.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and council members, my name is Amanda Warner, I'm a planner with Wade Trim, contracted planning and zoning for the town of Windermere. Tonight we have variance case C25 dash O3, the property owner applicant is Daniel and Sandra Webb and the representative is Daryl Nunnally. Requested action tonight is a variance to allow for the demolition and reconstruction of portions of an existing non-conforming pool and pool deck. At less than 50 feet from the normal high water elevation of Lake Butler. The property address is 904 Main Street and the surrounding and adjacent properties are residential. So the purpose of the variance request is to allow for the demolition and reconstruction of portions of existing non-conforming pool and pool deck within 50. Within the 50 foot setback from the normal high water elevation. The proposed reconstruction requires a partial demolition of that, of those existing features, reconfiguration. Of the pool within the 50 foot setback from the normal high water elevation and increase in elevation of the pool deck to eliminate a step down into the pool area. And an alteration to a planter for a new infinity edge pool waterfall. Now the current pool and pool deck are non-conforming with the 50 foot setback requirement, the pool and pool deck. Are currently set back approximately 26 feet, seven inches at the closest point and 42 feet, four inches at the furthest point. The 50 foot normal high water setback cuts across the existing pool and pool deck and that is shown on the exhibit that was included in your agenda packet tonight. Um, so section 10.1.03A1 of the town land development code requires that if a non-conforming structure is voluntarily. Fully or partially demolished, any reconstruction must meet all current requirements of the land development code. Because the proposed demolition and reconstruction of the pool and pool deck are not bringing the pool and pool deck into compliance with the required 50 foot setback. This requires approval of a variance from the town. Uh, so to give you some more detail about this, uh, the case analysis provides information about section 10.02.02 of the land development code. That section of the land development code lists the criteria in which the town council should consider the approval or denial of a variance application. One is the need for the variance arises out of the physical surrounding shape, topographical condition or other physical or environmental conditions that are unique to the subject property. Two, there are practical or economic difficulties in carrying out the strict letter of the regulation. Three, the variance request is not based exclusively upon a desire to reduce the cost of developing a site. Four, the proposed variance will not substantially increase congestion surrounding public streets, danger of fire, other hazards to the public. Five, the proposed variance will not substantially diminish property values or not alter the essential character of the area surrounding the site. Six, the effect of the proposed variance is in harmony with the general intent of the land development code. And seven, the variance will not encourage further requests or changes where such a land use would not be deemed appropriate. That section of the code also furthers, uh, specific standards that are not to be considered in the review of variance application. And those three standards are one, that the implementation of the regulations would impose an economic hardship on the cost of the project. That the regulations impose a hardship by decreasing the maximum density of a property in terms of numbers, units, square footage, buildings, et cetera, and three. That other adjacent land structures or buildings not in performance with the regulations provided last enough for lessening of the application of that specific case. Um, so section 10.2.2C of the land development code allows for the imposition of conditions and restrictions as may be necessary to allow a positive finding to be made on any of the variance standards to minimize the negative effect of that variance. Other conditional use, or excuse me, the conditions and restrictions should further the interest of the land development code. So the applicant tonight has submitted a site plan and other materials in support of the variance request, those are all provided for you in your agenda packet tonight. Uh, we did provide public notice for this variance case, those variances, excuse me, those variance notices were mailed to property owners within 500 feet of the subject property. As of October 1st of this year, seven responses were received in support of the variance and two responses were received in opposition to the variance. So at the recent development review board meeting on September 16th. The development review board reviewed the request for this specific variance and based on that information provided in the testimony at that particular meeting. The development review board recommended approval of variance with three conditions, as I mentioned, conditions can be imposed. Uh, the first condition was that stormwater swale shall be provided at the rear of the property to capture the first inch of stormwater run on from the property. Two was that the stormwater swale shall include water vegetation, for example, a rain garden. And three, that the property owner shall report a conservation easement over the rear yard of the property. And the development review board approved the variance out of 05 to 1. And available for any questions regarding this. Uh, yes, the third one was that the property owner shall report a conservation easement over the rear yard of the property.
Uh, is that a swell?
Uh, so the swell is the first two, the requirement for a swell and two, that that swell take the form of a rain garden, something that's vegetated. And then three was that the property owner shall report a conservation easement over the rear yard of the property.
Property currently old, it's first inch, I believe this number.
I believe.
It would be a ghost.
Uh, so for the, for the property currently, uh, the property currently where the pool sits is, um. The, the pool currently sits at less than 50 feet from the normal high water elevation, but the stormwater across the back of the property should be in place as required at the time of development. As required at the time of development.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, because it is a molder. Sometimes it gets added on.
I I. I think the intent is to ensure that there is a swell once the reconstruction takes place as that construction will. But that's the rear yard again uh during that construction activity.
Can you clarify reasoning for business to go?
Uh so uh for that, for the um specific uh reasoning for that, that was what the D R B imposed on it at their discussion. Uh so for the second one, uh it was the character of that swell ought to be vegetated in terms of um providing some kind of natural benefit. And then three, the rationale for that one was uh I believe the discussion at that meeting was regarding maintenance of the swell in the rear yard. After the full three.
Conservation is really a different than the meetings or maintain that area swell.
Yeah.
You're already not allowed to build there. The conservation reason doesn't change that. You're already supposed to maintain swell. The conservation reason doesn't change that. So it's kind of a.
Condition two doesn't. Well, a functional swell to me is something.
So the the fifty foot minimum setback requirement um would be in place for all properties along the waterfront. This variance reduces that setback for this specific property. Um but the requirement to have that swell is in effect placed by the first two conditions and is also maintained by the town's code of requiring swell. Uh before it's from water reaches the lake.
My understanding was that in nineteen ninety eight, you have to see fifty foot setback. So is this that already existed?
That's correct.
He also.
That's personally, I don't. I mean, they're lucky they have a pool they have. And you do an infinity edge pool, now you're moving that water closer to the lake. Twenty six feet is very close. You know, the larger ones for fifty foot setback for reasons. Hope you guys did. I was going to tell someone.
Oh, it takes back long time. On the fifty foot setback.
Yeah, you know, pre looking at ordinance companies.
I'm a little familiar with properties from years ago. Um. At this time, there's no swims. So if anybody else is is out there, it holds its water. Um but it is one of those houses that is built from side to side, front to back, and fills it all. Um. D R B, they really push for. New improvements, a guy, yeah, we can, we can be on board with this. Um because the. Uh impermeable area is not being expanded. You know, the pool's being shifted, yes. Um they're raising the tech to get rid of uh steps for safety, that kind of thing. That's that's the intent. Um I know they can be when they started going down this rabbit hole of all these conditions. It, the big one was proper storm swells that were maintained. You know, the the other two that's just added on the ways to protect it. I really believe uh us as a town, we need to come up with. Some. I don't know, every five year check on permitted swells. For variances that we give out. Yeah, no, but but you know, have a process and and work towards that and going. Every time we grant variance, it requires somebody put a swell or a large swell. Um that there's some accountability down the road. Um that was the intent of the D R B was trying to figure out how to do that without burning. Um but I think I think an improvement from from my point of view, an improvement on this property, I was like. Hands down. Since Sid has this, I think it's. It's what it's.
Uh I remember one variance that we did write to. Where we did make some requirements of vegetation that was supposed to be placed. We didn't that variance. Basically, we did not. That did not occur. We have a recourse. Does anybody else remember that? If this is the direction that council decided to go, would we have authorities to? Counsel, sorry Heather.
Do you have recourse? If you put a condition on variance, you can coenforce. And you could even put a condition on variance that things could be undone if you wanted to show me up.
I just want to make sure. Give something I wanted to say.
If you see it. Is there a vault kind of that this house? Um you could see it from behind the house. If you're, it only means is there a vault kind or is this a?
Yeah.
So you would be able to see even from the lake or something. So no one would know.
That is.
That's been the problem all along. You know, having conversations with Brad. On other properties, you know, the water property and ninety dollar, how he said last name was coming along. That that'll make, like, there were people across the now would report those people, but the only people that can report it or see it or know. Are the staff over, are the two on either side, because no one from the lake can see it. There's no way for it to be reported. So you're you're allowing these things and then there's no, there is a way to enforce it. But not if it's not seen and reported.
That's what that's what I was trying to get at was. We need to put something in place that says, okay, five years or three years, we said. Whatever it is.
That we can inspect.
That we can inspect it and we do.
So we changed that law.
Right.
Right.
We just need to add that to you guys.
You can put that on your variance.
But we can.
That you would set.
Yeah, we did.
That they you're requiring pictures once in a while, but yeah, you could put it in section requirements now.
There's no objection to counsel to picture that. Here from uh Mr. Webb, Mr. Dunley, now you can continue.
I I visited yesterday myself and we can't see actual CPR from Lake this time. I'm a personal neighbor and we saw that it's all uniform or lovely. You can't see it from Lake, that's a real issue, but I agree with you. It's a big improvement. It's not very important for me, probably. And actually improving well because at this point now, there's kind of a tough one. Fertilizer or otherwise.
I I'd concern with you have one inch. I've I've talked about this many, many times. One inch rainfall. Was created years and years ago. You know, everybody in town from the state of Florida and it's to catch the first inch of flush of rain. Because that's where most of the floods are, but. I've talked with them about and we changed our rules to be more than one inch of rain. Because reality is like the storm we had the other night from the last go. That was a four inch rainfall. They had three inches of loud. That's kind of the new norm. So one inch isn't a lot of retention for a house and property that size. Or any size to that time when we're we're building pretty close up to the edge. So deeper swells would be then, you know, something a little bit bigger because passing one inch is not very much. Going on.
Need to take, you know, are you ready?
Yes.
Probably need to take that up. Uh for further discussion. For what's your? If you guys wish.
Hi, Daryl Dunley for the homeowners. Address is one, 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 three, seven Lake Butler, Colorado. Basically, tonight's meeting is to request a pool. Physical change of the pool, not a change of the structure. So the physical structure, the the. Relaxing, let's turn to the footprint. It is a two tier uh foot footprint. It has a a planter box that goes around and it has the decking. It's been there since the middle eighties from what I'm being told and and what I can find in the public records. So it's been there for a long time. The the area that I have in the surveys. Appears to be in in the way the seawall is not perfectly lined up at the pool. It's at an angle. The far left hand side is roughly forty seven feet from the corner of the existing deck to the uh normal high water mark, not the seawall. And then the again, the normal high water mark also is not perfectly lined up with the property. There's over a hundred and ten linear feet of shoreline. And then on the right hand side, to be the south side, it's roughly thirty four feet from the existing deck to the normal high water mark. Of those two dimensions, there is existing swell or or yard in the back. Our goal from an ecology standpoint, there's a. Is to make that whole area roughly a hundred and twelve feet wide by twenty something feet on the right hand side. And thirty something feet on the left hand side. All swell and deeper swell to be a true swell, not just a sod flat sod yard like it currently is. So that will not only hold the one inch, it'll probably hold the two or three inches, the major waterfall. Because you're talking about an area that's substantial as far as a catch basin. Now, right now, in the middle of that area, there's a very large stair system that goes down from the deck to the uh. The boat dock, the the level uh at the top of the seawall. That's about a six or seven step down, so substantial. It it does get slippery. I've seen and I've been involved with this property through customers and parties and stuff for years and years. So I'm very familiar with the property. I have seen children slip. I've seen elderly slip. So there is a safety issue as well that we're going to cure by by allowing the variance. Is that stair system will go away and become on the far um. North side of the property. Um and become a good shallow or stairs stair system that it is now. Because the grade is so different on the far right hand side versus the the rear. And by removing that stair system in the back, you pick up another. Seven or eight feet of width and again, twenty or thirty feet of depth that would be incorporated in this new swell system. So you're picking up a lot more water storage than what you have currently. Um so that's from an ecology standpoint, I think our our request is is going to be better for the town and certainly for the property. Uh from a safety standpoint. And and most of you are familiar with how the drop off from Main Street down to the the shoreline, it's a substantial drop off. And this house is built in in terraces. So you've got two or three steps, you know, down once you get in the main house to get to the pool deck. Or or to the porch, cover porch, and then from there's to the pool deck is another four steps. So it's substantially, you know, walking down to the pool deck. We want to trade, change that by raising the pool deck a little bit. And and making it less steps. And by doing that, there is construction. There's there's some demolitions and construction. So we'd like to take advantage of that and incorporate taking the uh lima bean shape or the the uh. The free form shaped pool and move it. Closer to the existing seawall or existing uh. Pool deck. Um so it does change the footprint and all of what's always been there. The impermeable surface ratios. Won't change any and we are under, um that's not a variance request because where we meet all that as far as uh codes. But the only thing we don't need is having the pool truly fifty feet away from the normal high water mark. So if it by the calculation, the survey made us, you know, we're thirty four on one side and forty seven on the other. So really what we're requesting is a sixteen foot. Change on the right hand side and a three foot change on the left hand side. For the fifty foot setback. So it's not. When you say I want to go of fifty, you know, fifty feet, it sounds like you're going all all of the fifty feet. We're really not. We're already substantially in. The fifty feet um and grandfathered in. So if they don't get the variance tonight, it doesn't change. The location of the footprint. It it doesn't alter that. We're not creating something. We'll just modify something. So from a safety standpoint, we think that by having more deck between the house and the the new pool edge. Would be better for kids and elderly and then eliminating the steps in the very back is certainly better for kids and elderly. And then picking up a much more massive swell system, which can be. Uh guaranteed through the construction process, they won't be able to get a C O on the new pool system if the swell system's not to your your standards. Uh or or better than what the minimum standards will be. And we're totally open to to making it the best it can be. So that's really about it for the dog and pony show unless um. You got some questions? I'd love the opportunity to to answer some questions.
Questions or concern?
I mean, I I do want to say like on the map that we're provided. The dimensions, they uh one side is twenty six foot.
Is that from the seawall or the normal high water? This is probably the seawall.
Yes, you are correct. That mentioned something. So I guess I want to find one of the conservative you talked about, we said they're moving the sidewalk. And everything else, but some of that's on the map that we're getting. So it shows the sidewalk right down the middle of the property by the pool.
Well, the sidewalk on the left hand side or the north side has to stay because they need a sidewalk down to the boat house.
The steps.
Well. Okay, it's it's not really steps as much as it is just a a paper. Sloping walkway that's from on the north of the left hand side and it meanders to the seawall. The steps are directly behind the pool and they're fairly substantial. That would be on page. I don't know if you guys, you should have all these say these pages.
Basically, we're right here for the steps.
Right.
And and the sidewalk, there will be sidewalk.
You're you're saying the steps go away.
These steps go away.
That's just on the footprint of the drawing. I'm using my.
Will you propose? And then this goes the way. There should be a couple of doors rest out. One shoulder is actually sit over here. And these steps all the way down the sidewalk will stay. But this is really the the main saves issue in the back there.
What what do they have? As far as pictures and stuff, you don't have a full package?
I'm I'm being, I'm sorry, I'm not quoting, but you can hear that. That potential change. Permeable ratio, et cetera.
So um so for that, what we would do is repeat that.
Yes, to share for a second.
Sure, yeah. So for any configuration change, we would repeat that as part of the building for an application process. Um if it's at grade, it would not impact if if that walkway were revised in terms of configuration at grade. And we're not structured in terms of it not being elevated or up on post or anything like that. Um it wouldn't affect this variant variance case, for example, because there wouldn't be a setback required for that walkway.
Thank you.
I concern with you, if if we consider this, that all of these things are made as actual, you know, conditions. So so many times we get these variances in front of us. We were, we see one thing and then what's described is always just a little bit different than what we've seen in the actual what's laid out for us. So I'm just sharing the change that's nice.
You say it's from sidestep.
So like we're saying, it's gonna be deeper swell for two inches. I'm saying the sidewalk over there and sidewalk. This is why I know there's a few that. And we've improved it quite come through. We're gonna have landscape in here. We're gonna have this, but then it does never happen at all.
Yeah, we almost have. Lots of elevation that shows pool, but.
Right.
That didn't happen. I understand what you're saying, but going, but. It's not all caring. I think that's. Been the problem you're leading to. We're not getting full respect.
We're not. And we're voting on things. So I thought the description and then it seems like they don't come to fruition. We've had a lot of problems. About landscapes and I know there's a house that sits down. We have the height of the garage is way taller than the building behind it was. Close to you. And I somehow it seems like between the process of where we improve any council and when it comes to it's built. Doesn't match what we call the council. So I just want to make sure we're getting the board that it did.
Absolutely. Yeah, we really need to make.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I mean, I don't think there's any objection other than that.
Yeah, I I was, I've been meaning to come back with the drawing of the edits to show sidewalk where it's going to be located with the new. There's and, you know, different than what was shown here tonight. And then the comments like about impermeable material, I think that's a good idea. And the swells being for more than one inch of rainfall, but that reflected on what's presented to us.
Okay, so so if I'm crystal clear, you want. A engineered or some kind of drawing to show the real as built, the the proposed to be built to scale.
What I'd like to see Daryl is page one sixty five in the agenda with the new condition.
Hey, you said it.
It's the base of that. It's a side plan.
It's a side plan, but you have the existing condition side plan. So it's the new decision.
And I'll just make one clarification about this. Page one sixty five is the existing condition. It's not the. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
It's just a, it's very similar to this. It's just a, it's very similar to this. That we can definitely do that because we have, we have.
Is you uh as I said, oh, absolutely. And it's worth it, we'll we'll need in ten days, so.
So we're tabling this for ten days, is basically what you said, okay, alright, we'll we'll have it ready for you.
If the owner wants to make comments as well, I I don't want to take away your time, but you can certainly say if we're good and we'll look forward and see you. Thank you. Thank you, council, good discussion.
Can we add a motion for a daytime certain? Please.
I'm sorry, say that again.
A motion for this to be the new to daytime certain, which will be your next meeting, please, thank you.
Or a motion, uh or a daytime certain, uh.
November eleven.
November eleven, twenty twenty-five.
The motion to stable the variance to November eleven, um for reset both the drawings.
Motion by councilperson Haines. Second councilperson's true, right? William, sorry. Our voices in line and over your. Page um in voting with councilperson needs.
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you, council. Actually, for our financial items, uh item number one is to approve purchase of labor on equipment from Central Park. You know, thirteen thousand forty dollars and forty-five cents with game time being the approved vendor. Council, you have questions on that? Like to make a motion, absolutely.
They do the motion to search.
Councilperson David from Parks and Rec will make the motion to approve. Ready for a study from councilperson David. Questions, comments, concerns, council? See, we can, okay, councilperson's true. Aye.
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 And David, I'm gonna leave. We're moving guys from different ends.
Yeah, I got where I did not work.
Uh next up is item two, this is the approval of the holiday lighting for four pools, thirty-five thousand and fifty-five dollars and thirty five, thirty seven cents. From Humbug, Humbug, uh lucky, lucky. Uh which is the only time I'd laugh this week, so thanks. Um council, any questions, comments or concerns?
Actually, I can't hide that time because that's a little bit complicated. Um but I don't think the whole tree, the picking like three or four and then going all the way up is a big issue.
So unfortunately, I can see from your pack that you did not receive the um full rendering that was part of the pack, but I see that it didn't come through. Um they have done that, they have gone up the trees and out on all the limbs. Um so it it will be much nicer than what you have previously seen. Um Travis and team walked with them, I think it's something like. Twenty-four trees, something like that. But yeah, I apologize that your rendering did not come through. So this is for not just trees, but also your light poles and your garden and your light poles and your tree.
Three, three, you've done a whole and. I see my.
Twenty-five trees, sorry, twenty-five trees. Yeah, twenty-five trees, fifty-nine light posts. Yes, they're going all the way up and off the branches on those trees.
Thank you, there's that question.
Yes.
It's more than. What person did you agree to push along with that? It's it's forty-five degrees, a lot. It is a lot tonight. Oh, we also have a lot of feedback from last year with that.
Well, once that we're done, we're down.
So what's important to note is what we have done the previous two years is basically contract about the labor to put lights up. Okay, what is different about this proposal is they are actually bringing in all the lights, the decor. And putting all of that up for us, taking it down and taking it away. The reason that we've been having also difficulty getting contractors to come out and just provide the work to put the lights up is our lights are old. They become what is considered a safe and a liability for that company to put them on. So this is good lights, good decorations and decor, just like Winter Garden and Cooley does each year. Um and it's nicer looking lighting before all of that each year.
How many trees did we get last year?
I don't know, I don't, I honestly don't know, because like I said, that's something that Travis just comes out here with the contractor and points out the trees to do and that's what they do. But this year we walked with them, the whole downtown kind of square corridor here, and we came up with the twenty-nine trees and that's.
Uh two fifty-seven, let's go, it's got a little layout, it's got a side plan. It just wasn't viable last year, I mean, I believe this will be the end of the year. I guess the question is going down, you know, breaking pause, should we focus on fewer number of trees? For new sidewalks. Or my head is. I just think that's the most popular. Do you work for Humbug? I mean. Yeah. Yeah, the problem. It I mean, it it's not a small amount, I mean, that certainly occurred, um. I also.
So on the on each two, seven I C. Three, one, three, four, ground, passport. And course, three thirteen through, but. If I read something that I've done that says about smaller cars or other places. I mean. Yeah.
Maybe you could give an answer, and the the problem is that we certainly can't go out and back to it, you know, at this time. So if you want to set. Or max maybe, it worked out, I don't know.
I can see, I can see what they can do, we did ask them to sharpen their pencils and bring the best prices for us. Um and so that's what they did. With some vendors telling me it was high in the sky, would be, that's a very bad value.
That's amazing, with with both you is just making sure that we have better coverage. In the last couple of years, that's something that's turned out, I'm not really concerned about how many trees. We've got through the thirty-five thousand is. The smallest, the whole.
Uh you were better.
I think you're going to more with your hunger lands, first of all.
Oh, you can't say. David.
We're already got with the big thirty-five thousand dollar quote. With the caveat that we're looking at a better. Or expensive lights, if it if it's less trees, that's okay. But make sure that it's just judgment on this.
You mean it's less trees from last year or less than the twenty-five trees that we had?
Less than the twenty-five years here. Unless we're covering more, unless we're covering more of the tree, that was the.
But but the quote was recovering the whole tree, the branches.
Yeah, it's going up the up the trunk and out on the branches. But you know, that if if you want it to be heavier on certain trees, then we can.
I think that's where we've been, they go out on the range, but they go, oh, we're gonna do the first three on the bottom and then that's it. So we have a trunk that's got three limbs on it, people drive by versus something that goes.
Yeah.
Uh two layers up, so I'm willing to to. I don't think we're getting the big lower. But a better expensive. You.
And let the staff, more than what looks to be helpful to start everyone, have a very beautiful downtown. Alright, we have a question on tape, council. Anything additional? And what we put in council's things.
I I guess this year is. I want to do it, I don't know, I I would rather it be less trees.
Yeah, you can be clear, we're even higher than they.
So, uh so we're good, are we gonna look at less than twenty-five trees, because that will bring a quote down, say we have ten or twelve really nice trees. And it's going out all the way to the land, their quote is based on twenty-five trees, so it would be less.
I I do, I do not think that would be worth the vendor's time.
So they'll consider it too small.
Yes, yes, and we chose the vendors that we did because they work with Winter Garden and Cooley, so they're already going to be logistical here working on their lights. So it makes sense for us to get the best price with it.
Do you still have time to come up with something else if the phone ain't?
No, you need your lights installed, in fact, I I just worry we were being continued until this may have. The lights have to be in place at the beginning sort of of November for light up, right? Yeah.
Third, Friday, tomorrow, so three.
So we had them holding to get this tonight, so we can let them loose.
Yeah, I mean, our next year is November eleventh, so we're gonna have.
Yes.
I mean, I I can, I can say I will be out here with the vendors personally, myself and my staff to make sure this looks nice.
I know it was quite crap last year, but how much did it cost?
I think they paid.
Do you think it was five or fifteen dollars, fifteen?
Yeah.
Fifty thousand dollars in last year's?
Yes, you have to have bucket trucks get up there, that's an expensive bus, even when we do it in-house, we pay at least six thousand in bucket truck costs just to have that. And then if something goes wrong in the middle of the season, we can fix it.
Okay, looking for a vote.
I don't know, I think it's kind of expensive, I don't know, it's like it is double. I'm getting that down, I'm I'm.
Are you voting now or are you voting, I don't know, I'm so confused. And this time it's not.
It's like a thirty-five thousand dollar one.
I don't know what you think so, we're sorry.
All what you want is done.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I think it's a major issue, but they don't want that, yeah.
You don't have to do it again next year, if you don't like it, you could see what this is like and see if this is acceptable and.
You get approval up to and I'll have on your work.
You want what?
You get approved up to and we can have John to work. Problems is.
Oh, if you need that. Okay, so I would say no for this this question. Okay. And I can do this slightly smaller amount. When you say the one that the tapes say we, we got it for the sales department.
Yeah, the motion.
I started with it, we're done since, since here, you get, we got a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, alright, well. I did not expect that, so that, something we didn't care for. Councilperson against this.
Sure, yeah, that was the deal, it's twenty-five.
Give me a, I don't think that's, that's not the option.
So I did, next year we need to, you know. Figure out which trees are gonna be most effective, and possibly a lot of, I think this is thirty-five thousand dollars. But the bad was, we're putting up and taking down. So we can, we could do seemingly his. They will be like from this and.
Well, you gotta talk about this, June. Uh and so I guess.
Yes, yes.
This happens every year, if we get to preposition ourselves and we get better at work, they would still spend a lot of money. So it's getting later, there's no.
And we do need to back.
And you're gonna wind it down the base. Hey, but you wind it down the base where it makes you.
Alright, you ready to move on to our next item? I have a number three, it's like, you know, number one thirty, this is going to end in number one, prohibited road in wire road around about. Uh main entry into Maria Bay, you know, landscape concept design. Eight way landscape irrigation construction documents, signage design, gave some presentations. Three seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars of the vendor. Also, if you improve, unless there's any.
I have questions, how are you doing?
I was saying.
It's I've got a concern about the thirteen thousand five hundred dollars assigned to signage design. We bought the new sign without flexing a couple of times. For less than six thousand dollars and buying with the thirteen thousand five.
You already have a design, you're subdivision one.
And the one that's up right now.
But that'll need a new time.
No, they, they're looking at flanking both sides of Maria Bay's entrance.
I guess I need them to. Find the signage business, prefer the design for the back walls themselves. Because I don't think that we call nobody to. Uh documents or processes.
We can relate that to.
Well. So I could deliver a timeline.
I don't believe so.
Yeah, we can, we'll make a look for the table distance.
Right, motion to table until next meeting, uh councilperson David. And your second. First needs. In voting with councilperson's true. Aye.
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 Fine.
I stepped on our agenda, I am seeing his winter tree board member appointment for appealing. Also, new promotion to the.
The better, but the group.
Group, councilperson needs.
Seven.
Second councilperson data, in voting with councilperson needs. Bye.
Hey.
Bye. Bye. Good addition. Any uh council liaison reports? And you guys started on.
Right, oh, I can hold up, uh hoopla indications are going up next week, or the first week of November, they're being handed delivered. So they are, they are door anchors. As you already disclosed, it's because we always have problems with people not getting your invitation. That they divided up the twelve hundred homes and. Over a three day period, they're gonna scan the living room down, so he's four hundred door sets, went and locked it up, it's. No, well, we already, they aren't in order. And in many of our, that they will own.
He was saying, um, and C T O said, we deliver on the second.
Like a guess. We have coordinated with um, alright.
I think this, that's gonna be uh period. Staff reports. Nice, so.
Sorry.
Um.
It's probably cost hurting.
Especially yesterday, um. First annual pumpkin garden event.
Discussion yesterday, uh, when they had this, that's normal, first annual pumpkin carving event process. Yeah, are you worried? The, uh, we had a discussion about rehab of school house, um, and about home building, finally gave that report. Uh, it looks like it's gonna be taken place in the books. Also, ways to showcase historic homes, um, and a discussion about, uh, that's where improvements and law and tax work. Uh, we did, uh, select one additional application for any member, if it was for presentation or if it's on past eight, totally, and potential for two additional. Um, additionally, uh, one of the things that I shot Robert's on, um, have looked at like the council to take this up, I mean, uh, agenda, is list review, the current status of boards and committees, um, across the board, there's several boards and committees that added that are what function he has intended, uh, I think we need to, you all of those to make sure. He said, what kind of, that why would you?
There are nothing. Anyone else?
No. They were, uh, it's basically obviously because of the question. Um, and then we had, um, some people that down, right now we don't have a chair, we're supposed to get that taken care of the next month's meeting. It's definitely not, you know, a lot of cars sitting perfectly.
Indeed.
Oh, and historic block, sorry, there's, they're working on a map for this, um, historic tree block, the historic trees and plenty of air and centennial trees that has branched in the ground. I think there's something with eighty or ninety something trees in the ground, that's a hundred trees, a lot to get away this year. So they've got a map on that, and one of our new, only just voted in tonight, is something with. Local, it's not of all those locations.
Yeah.
Wall or street, some old roofs, you know, some dwellers.
Yes, and you did not get your plan for the new. Even if I doesn't mean more than the tree board, um, the lady who was doing that, and she was taking photos of everyone, she's actually somebody who's. But everybody has a plan, you know, so. One that I want to see planned, and some people still don't have.
Nothing, everybody doesn't say, says. Um. You have a great Halloween, man?
He did.
Fantastic job, we're pretty much, really well attended, and seeming just right. Pumpkin carving event, as mentioned. And also the. Beer festival.
And I think that's, there was a raise, but I forget my stuff, so I will do that. So they, 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 they made it to me, maybe more than they have. It's a, it's a, it's a.
Good job, and all this work that was the one we got from the town staff, P D, uh, I don't know, well, here was. Robert, thank you, sir. You got it, because it's, I think it was fourth.
Yeah. Waters. No, we got burned.
Yeah, there's never money that day. The other event that we, um, kind of looked was the Sign and MVP's pumpkin build, uh, that was well attended, um, we were able to build a hundred beds. I saw an article where they're actually being delivered, right? Um, like last weekend, so just seeing the pictures and stuff like that, just, uh, it makes it such a worthy cause. The only thing I have right now, because we'll be meeting two or three weeks, is that we're still keeping an eye on Tallahassee and trying to figure out what's gonna be happening with property, uh, tax reform. Uh, right now, I think there's a total of about twenty-five different iterations of it. Um, and I don't believe the governor is in support of any of them at this point. So we're gonna see how that goes.
It'll be interesting. Um, talk to your neighbors. And good luck for return, so. Nobody likes taxes, but also. Takes money to, um, housing unions, that some of the options are not particularly attractive or viable. Grab your replacement bar, and things like that, so. Some big decisions ahead, big, big and important, uh, initiatives online, that be potentially preferring rapidly. Sometimes not the best way to get to this.
Or better than that, especially, I'm not sure if you have the data, how we household is input down, we have the phone stays.
We didn't get that information.
It's just gonna be, that's, that's where the governor is pushing, so. That, that data is the.
As well as the alternative. What if the alternative revenue source, like may or may not. You really, uh, productive, but it's not a very limited commercial. Any additional, Robert?
No, sir.
And thank you for remembering the pumpkin build, uh, it's not, you know. Thank you for all the hard work on the, the roads, uh, past two nights, so.
Thank you, I was actually gonna thank everyone for their patience, it was a very severe storm. Uh, my team worked very hard on Monday and today, getting everything back online, so I appreciate everyone's patience, um, as we work through that, thank you very much. Um, secondly, we have the Butler Show Water Improvement Project is underway, so you will see some work going on there. Um, that contractor's going to seal construction, they just got that away, and they're a new partner for the town. So we're looking forward to seeing how that goes. Um, secondly, West Second Avenue is going gangbusters, thank you, John, very much, to you and Mr. Chase, you have been pushing that project along, and I really do appreciate that, Cass Hart, the contractor out there, has been very well received, I have received very, very few negative comments about that project, so I think that's a true testament to the work that John and Frank are doing out there, um, helping move this process along, so thank you, John, for that, and please let Frank know, I said that too. Um, but I would like to, again, ask for everyone's patience, we have a lot of projects taking place here in the town, we're about to do a construction kickoff meeting, a pre-con with DOT relative to the, uh, York Transit National Bridge this week. So just keep in mind, there's a lot going on in town, and, and we're working as hard as we can to make that as easy as possible for the residents, so it'll be a great thing when it's all done.
We're bringing this.
I'm looking forward to that.
We're bringing this, and we can ever, uh, have, I think, quite a form, and, um, and more significant. Laboration, um, and we'll be doing, perpetuating on second, unless I hear differently.
Yes, John, John worked very, very carefully with Cass Hart, he also walked with Deputy Chief Bomp to make sure that everything would be okay for that. Um, and the contractor has gone above and beyond to get everything ready for that, so again, that's a true testament to a good partner.
Goodness, everybody, so that, that would be, I know everybody would be super disappointed if it wasn't safe to do that, so, um, but everybody worked together to. Councilor Ramos.
I don't have the question.
And we've heard enough, it's, right, easy.
We have a lot, I will say that we haven't had a lot of events this October, I played here Saturday, and we're looking forward to November. Quiet, um, we will be there on Friday, so we're looking forward to seeing kids out there. And last, uh, our detective John Allen that retired, he came back as a reserve.
No kid.
Instantly, so you will see him, his wife kicked him out of the house. He's spending a lot of time with us.
We're gonna waste as much time on Facebook, it's late, because we don't, we don't.
So we're, I haven't been back with the spirit, so you can see him around, um, but that's all I know.
Okay, it's great, and so. Third, for, for.
Uh, yeah, we have a new, um, records request portal on the website, that's now electronic, it's great for tracking, and then once, especially like with the police department, a lot of the things that it commonly requested, like for the few of the cases that they have, the father cams and all that, that'll be out there once it's, once the request is filled. So if somebody just goes in the search and puts in, let's just say, John Doe, it'll bring up everything that's been fulfilled from John Doe, and then we won't get that request, we'll be able to access it right in our mind, but like, so we'll post way back down, um, somewhere plus.
Our transparency, our efficiency, the plus, of course, you know, they. Stand, anything else for the good of the order, council? See none, we will adjourn our running your town council meeting at seven forty.